The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the oral call?
Yes. Counselor Bean.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Present.
Counselor Bisaw.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor DiNettali.
Yeah.
Counselor Donnelly.
Yeah.
Counselor Green.
Present.
Counselor Joseph.
Yes.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Tran.
Present.
Present.
Public forum, anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing public hearing petitions, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and item number on the agenda which you're addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, proceed to the report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Donnelly.
I have reviewed the records and they appear to be in order. Move the records committee report to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor. We have three communications this evening. One is an appointment of Ms. Elizabeth Murphy as interim Executive Director of Community Development for a term until a qualified permanent appointment is submitted and confirmed. Second appointment of Mr. Mark Barbodaro as Building Commissioner for a term on June 7th, to begin on June 7th, 2017, an expiration date of June 7th, 2020. Third communication this evening is appointment of Ms. Sharon Tardif as a member of the Fitchburg Disability Commission for a one-year term with an expiration of June 1st, 2018.
May we refer to the appointments committee?
Second.
I have a motion and second to refer the three communications of appointment to the appointments committee. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. And counselors, just one communication, not requiring any action this evening, but a notification from Vincent P. Pousatieri, the second Esquire, City Solicitor to the Mayor advising that he has appointed Attorney Christine Tree as Assistant City Solicitor as of May 9th, 2017, following the resignation of Attorney Mark Goldstein. Ms. Tree is here this evening. Attorney Tree has done a tremendous amount of work for this city already in the months leading up to this, so this is certainly welcomed to see her joining the city's team and certainly thank her for her past work and look forward to working with her in the future. Thank you. All right. We have report from committees, we have an item in Finance Committee, Counselor DiNettali.
Thank you, Mr. President. 11817, it was brought to my attention, the Finance Committee last week could not hold its regularly scheduled meeting due to lack of a quorum. Mr. Delain, Deputy Commissioner of Water, contacted me and alerted me to the sensitive nature, time-sensitive nature of this order to approve the attached resolution, an order which authorizes the City of Fitchburg Water Division to accept funding from the Federal Forest Legacy Program as outlined in the enclosed petition. I gave Mr. Delain my own K that I would pull this from committee or have asked the Counsel to pull it from committee and take it up tonight so he could speak. A second there.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 11817. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, it is before you. Mr. Delain, good evening.
I'll let Janet speak mostly to it, but this involves, as Counselor DiNettali said, that we're accepting some monies for a, from a grant from the federal government. This is a project that's really no cost to the City of Fitchburg, will allow us to protect some additional land around one of our most important reservoirs, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm Janet Morrison and now I'm operating as an independent conservation consultant. I've been working in this particular project for quite a while though, actually, about seven years. We're finally getting to the part of the project where we are going to be able to conserve Mr. Crash's property, which on the map you are receiving is the property outlined in red, and there's sort of a pink blob in the middle of it. Basically thirty-one acres in the town of Princeton, there is a, what we call a Zone A tributary flowing through it. This is a tributary that flows to Bickford Pond Reservoir that you can also see on the map. The project involves, as Mr. Delain said, federal forest legacy funding, and this particular property, the city will be receiving reimbursement of very close to 100% for the cost of the conservation restriction, the acquisition cost of the conservation restriction, which is $155,000, and all due diligence and associated expenses. This is a reimbursement grant, but the city will be receiving the acquisition dollars prior to closing. So basically, this is pretty much free conservation for the city because of the nature of this particular grant program.
And this is an important area, as Joan said, I mean Janet said, that it's along one of the tributaries of Bickford Reservoir, which is one of our most pristine reservoirs, so we'd like to do everything we can to continue to protect it. You know, even though the city is known as having a lot of water, last year during the drought, we had to rely heavily on this reservoir, and it's our most outlying reservoir during the drought, and had to pump quite a bit of water out of there to maintain our other reservoirs going down to the treatment plant, so it's something that is, something we definitely need to protect and make sure that it's there for, you know, the next hundred years for residents, so.
Counselor Green.
Has Mr. Crash's passed away?
No, he's still alive, but the couple who owns the property, they are in their 90s, and that's part of the time-sensitive nature of this project. It's been going on a long time, not Mr. Crash's fault that it took so long. Part of it is the very bureaucratic nature of this federal program.
Okay, so when that time comes, this land in red is what we're talking about that we will receive and put in a land trust as outlined in this?
No, no, actually, this is going to be done during his lifetime.
Okay.
This is a conservation restriction, which is a way of protecting land without acquisition. Actually, the city is purchasing the development rights on that land. There's a document which outlines what Mr. Crash's or any future owner could do on the property, basically, you know, open space types of activities that do not impact negatively any of the natural resources or the water resource. It's a standard conservation restriction, we've done quite a few of them in the city. So this means that as of 30 days from now, the city should hold this conservation restriction. Again, it's a recorded document, it's a permanent form of protection, but it does not, it is the acquisition of development rights, so the land can never, ever, ever be developed. It's a little bit less expensive way of conserving land, and it's preferable to some people.
Okay, and the property, the private property that's before it, any conservation on that land yet?
On, there is conservation all around it, so what you're looking at is a map of basically permanently conserved land all around it, so it's connecting actually to fairly large landscapes.
Right, that yellow portion, that shaded portion is also protected with a conservation restriction and can't be developed, so this is just adding to that area, so.
Already in place, okay.
In some ways, I mean, the owner, the family will still own the property, but they won't be able to develop it. We're basically using federal money to protect it from development forever, so we're not going to have to worry about somebody building a road there to construct houses here or there or doing anything like that. They'll just be passive recreation rather than, you know, any type of building roads or anything like that, so it's really a win-win for the city, because in some ways we don't have to be actually responsible taking care of the land, or if somebody does anything to it, it's still the owner's property, but we don't have to worry about it ever being developed or built upon, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Bean.
I think you answered most of the questions, it's kind of a no-brainer, and thank you for the efforts and work you put into this. I just make a motion that we accept 11817.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept 11817. Speaking to the motion, we have a few other counselors. Counselor Caddy.
Are there any dwellings on it presently?
No.
Oh.
No.
Counselor Joseph.
Again, thank you for the work. Private, yes, on work, obviously.
Difficult to get this thing, and I'm sure this was time-consuming, and just out of ignorance, why, I know we have property all over the place, in different cities and towns, why wouldn't Princeton be more interested in doing this conservation restriction? And I know we have interest there, but why, what does a town feel like when we come in and purchase property?
They're very happy.
Yeah?
Towns and cities have different attitudes about conservation, but Princeton is extremely happy about it. Anything that we do in Princeton, they're very happy about.
But why wouldn't they do it, or?
I think they're working on other projects too in Princeton, so I think they kind of let it fall back to us on this one, knowing that we are going to look out for, you know, the interest of the city as far as protecting the reservoir, so, I mean, they have too many irons in the fire and they try to acquire too many grants they may not be able to, so.
Okay.
But they're, I've talked to people from Princeton and they're very supportive of this, you know, they want to see as much protected as possible in that area, so.
Good, again, thank you.
Just a quick question, does this allow for the, a change or repurpose of that restriction at any time for the city? Would this allow us to, say, purchase that property later on or modify it to protect that land?
It doesn't, it doesn't prevent anyone from purchasing it.
Okay.
However, there is a provision in the conservation restriction where if the same, if the holder of the conservation restriction also purchases, the land becomes the same, then there's a provision for that, for an assignment of that conservation restriction to another entity. But that land could be owned by the city in the future, could be owned by another private landowner, could be owned by the town of Princeton. The important thing is that it is permanently protected from development. In terms of whether that can change, it's not an easy thing to change. There are amendment clauses in there, but those require, it has to be more protective of the resource and nevertheless protective of Lisa, and we really, the state of Massachusetts, which also has to sign this, really does not advocate for amendments. It gets us also into a little difficulty with, in cases of donations with the IRS. So it's basically a permanent recorded restriction.
How are these restrictions enforced? Are they enforced by the City of Fitchburg, by the state, or by, in this case, the town of Princeton?
The City of Fitchburg actually has an obligation to monitor its conservation restrictions annually to make sure that the restrictions are being followed. And in fact, we just finished, there's presently an internship with the Pittsburgh State University where we've identified some students who are interested in an internship. We are working with one intern now who has gotten what we call conservation monitoring training. Actually, five students have received that training, and one of them is now working with the city, has completed what we would call a monitoring report, which involves a site visit, photographs, and it works off of what we call a baseline report, which is done when the conservation restriction is entered into. So there's a lot of, the Forest Legacy Program requires extensive documentation of the property, which we will, we are, we have done, and the city will be reimbursed for, but based on that documentation, every year, monitoring, site visit is done, a report is generated, and that report is actually sent to the state Forest Legacy Administrator, because there is that obligation to make sure that once the feds give us money to protect something, that it remains protected.
And basically, that's pretty much a no-cost, minimal cost to the city, you know, some reimbursement for mileage and things like that, and it act, you know, it's beneficial to the students at Fitchburg State who are in that program, because it does offer them an internship and some experience in that area, which is a field they're pursuing. In addition to that, we also monitor the watersheds with our, you know, our personnel that go out there and basically patrol the area, so if there's anything blatant that would, you know, occur, we would be aware of it right away, in addition to the yearly more intensive review of the property.
Thank you both for your efforts on this. Ms. Morrison, thank you, I've seen you in front of us for years now, speaking to these different parcels, so I appreciate all of your ongoing efforts.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
This white area over here, is that the reservoir or is that all wetland?
Uh.
Green road?
That's another parcel owned by the Crash's family, it is not protected at this time. There are wetlands involved, what you're looking at, there is a wetland there, and those are wetland areas. There's a little wetland on that, on that, on that map, so, yes, most of the land we protect is a combination of wetlands and uplands.
All right.
We try to make sure that we concentrate in the most sensitive areas, we can't protect everything, but we want to protect the tributaries and the areas around those, so.
I want to say thank you, I think you're doing a marvelous job, because I like clean water, so I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to approve 11817. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Legislative Affairs Committee oral report, Counselor Bean.
Chairman, the Legislative Affairs Committee met tonight at 6:30. Wanted to make sure it's corrected on the, on the form we have in front of us tonight, on the agenda tonight, but the meeting began at 6:30. Our first petition was 09917 by Lenny Laxo, DPW Commissioner, to authorize and sign the attached intermunicipal agreement between the City of Fitchburg and the Town of Spencer for the purposes of joining the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition. That was passed four to zero. And then we had 117, 10117 of the petitions of the city solicitor to amend the code of the City of Fitchburg to promote efficiency and uniformity in the procurement process. Both those petitions were approved and granted. There's a move, there's a motion made to remove petition 87.
81.
81, excuse me, 8117 from the committee, and again, it's a companion petition to 101 and 101. That was, was voted also, granted four to zero.
Motion to accept the Legislative Affairs Committee report.
Second. I have a motion and second to accept the Legislative Affairs oral, oral report. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Joseph.
Can we do action on a petition that's not on the agenda?
My report was to say it was still on the table. It was on the table, their last meeting, it was left on the table. As a matter of fact, we did, when we put it on the table, it was specifically to be pulled, to be coupled with these two. So we had an option to leave it there, leave all three of them on the table for the next couple of weeks, or bring them all forward, and I, I'm comfortable with bringing them all forward today.
But when he published his agenda for tonight's Legislative Affairs and it only had three petitions on it, but we're voting on four, I think that's a violation.
I think you've got minutes from your last meeting that had that on the table, so I'm not sure that that would be a violation.
It's particularly time-sensitive.
No.
Counselor, if you'd like, that could be withheld from this report and?
I just don't want to get in trouble for not putting something on an agenda and passing it.
Your point is well taken, and I, I tend to concur. If we have any question, we should probably, we should probably wait, we could, we could accept withholding 8117, leave it as accepted, and then have it appear on the next agenda. Counselor Bean, would that be suitable?
I was taking advice from the city solicitor, the action we took tonight, so whatever pleases the Counsel, but we asked that question during the committee meeting, and the committee at that time decided to move forward by taking it from the table, which we had it on the table from the last meeting.
I have a counselor with a concern, and we're without our clerk, who typically is our resident chief expert to advise, so without, without feeling absolutely positive, I'd feel more comfortable if we excluded that from the report this evening, had that reappear on the agenda. I think the action that was taken in committee is fine, it can simply appear on the next agenda to be accepted.
So, so my opinion is that you've got on your counsel agenda an oral report, and they're giving you an oral report, but I, I think it's not a time-sensitive thing, so if you want to proceed.
There's a motion on the table, so.
Is it time-sensitive?
It is not a time-sensitive thing.
Anyone could appeal it if we did it out of order, but if we approve it, someone doesn't like it, they're going to appeal it. There's nothing to, nothing's going, no one's going to argue that. I don't see where the appeal's going to come from.
Counselor, there's a motion on the table, it can either be amended or it can be, be accepted. I don't hear a amendment. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition. Motion carries. Hearing. Order, eminent domain, Summer Street, North Street Improvement Project, Summer Street, John Fitch Highway, Ray Avenue, Shelley Avenue is outlined in the enclosed order. Declare the hearing open. I'd ask any persons representing the petition to come forth at the center table, identify yourself by name and address for the record.
Go, Mr. Donnelly.
To your preference, Mr. Solicitor.
Mr. President, members of your council, we have been working on a project to improve the Summer Street stretch, Fitchburg, over the course of the last couple of years, and through the DPW Department. We're just here presenting the final order. The project has been well advertised, we've had, I thought, great communication with all the property owners that have been affected by the project. I know I have a few of them here today, I'm hoping that they have an opportunity to address us, if there are any additional questions that they have. We have prepared a final order. We had to make a change to the order because we received a couple of recent donations. I know that the mayor has written to them already, but we have had several people receive notification of their award of damages, but decide nonetheless to donate the property. I just take a second to identify them. Paul DeGeronimo, operating as the South Realty, South Fitch Realty LLC. We have the 30, John Fitch Corp. We have Brian Taylor of Lowell Road in Concord. He operates at 347 Summer Street. We have Peter and Ann Capadaglia. They are residents here in Fitchburg at 75 Brightfield Road, and they operate property at 383 Summer Street. And we have the Joseph F. Smalley Jr.'s Trust, and he operates property at 4 Summer Street. So we'd like to thank those people publicly, and we certainly want to hear any questions that people might have. I do have the engineer with us tonight, and we do have our folks with the DPW Department to help answer those questions. And I do have, Mr. President, a corrected order to reflect some recent donations.
Thank you.
And an extra copy, please, sir.
Counselors, questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd ask if there's anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition?
Anyone with questions?
All have been heard.
We have questions.
Ma'am, you may come forth and certainly ask a question.
My name is Donna White, I own 381 Summer Street. I just want to make sure, I don't mind that they need to probably be on your property for, you know, a period of, however long it's going to take, but I just had very bad experience with the City of Fitchburg with Rovoli, which a lot of people had a lot of problems with Rovoli. My only question is, I had a fire in Fitchburg, it's a long story, I'm not going to get into it, had a lot of damages that occurred because of the city, but anyway, I'm just afraid I'm going to lose the front of my building. I had to put a handicap ramp in and, you know, so I just want to be sure, if you want to park out there for five years, I don't care, you can park out there for the five years, I just want to know, am I going to lose the front of that property, or am I going to be able to pull in after you're done? Because we know we're not, you're not going to be in front of a building for five years. Might be in front of a certain section for six months.
Sure.
And Summer Street's been a disaster for years, when they put the water lanes in the sewer, I mean, I had a fire, I had to cross the street, the policemen were out there four times a day letting me cross so I could get back to my building that had burnt, so.
Ma'am, your, your question was, was actually, I asked this yesterday of our, of our city solicitor and some of our project managers, and they were there to assure me, so one, at all times, you will have access to your property, as well as the driveway and frontage, that in fact, they'll, when they do the work, they'll conduct it in two stages. One side to allow you to continue using the side that has, hasn't yet begun construction, and then the second side, so it'll be done in two phases, and there'll be a resident engineer, I understand, on site at all time to address concerns exactly like that, so it'll be someone overseeing the project, and I'll allow the city solicitor to, to add to that commentary.
Sure, we have the engineer available if there's additional questions. Let me see, where were you, Donna?
Here.
Donna, there's going to be a sidewalk here with a curb, there's going to be access to your property here.
Okay, so we could enter and park like that, right?
Enter and park in that way, yeah, but that sidewalk and that, there'll be a brand-new curb and sidewalk, and we really hope that it's going to improve the appeal of the property.
So Derby Court, it's wide open, but there'll be no access from Derby Court to go into it, or there will be the access as well?
I don't see any access here. Could you please introduce yourself, counsel?
Hi, my name is Trish Domigan, I'm the project manager from VHB, that's working on the project. See, like, right now, we're parked in front. He said this is going to be sidewalk, we tend to this way, but right now, if we wanted to enter this way and park that way, which would take up less space, is that, that's Derby? Right now, we're showing it as a curb. We can take a look at it so that we can put it down a little bit more, so that you can park in there. Okay, so it isn't like set in stone that there'll be a curb right there? Well, it's final design, but yeah. Yeah, which can work with it for the width of a car. Sure.
What we're identifying for the property owners is that the, as built, these builds, these proposed 100% drawings aren't necessarily going to control what they do in the field at the end of the day. We're going to do everything we can to accommodate.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll do that through the resident engineer process.
We'll make sure that you have a contact, once the project begins, that you can take any questions or concerns to on an ongoing basis.
All right, then I'm satisfied at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak at this time?
I have a very quick question.
Of course, you could come forward.
I'm Amanda Vega, I live on Shelley Avenue, number 23. I just want to know how far down the road are you guys paving that road, and how far down are the sidewalks going, and what side exactly are they going on?
It'll allow our city solicitor to field this, and she's the one with the map here.
I just want to make sure I understand what's going on, I'm a stay-at-home mom, so I'm like, I don't want trucks going in and out all day, if I want to know where they're ending.
We want everyone to be clear about the process.
Yeah, I just want to know what's going on.
So we're seeing that the curb, the curbing is going to come around the end, it's going to stop about 10 feet into Shelley Ave.
Is that where the restaurant is?
And the restaurant is here, and they're going to continue to have all that parking right there?
Yep. That's right.
And they have a telephone line easement, but that's not going to interfere. So the work, the roadwork will be done about 10 feet into Shelley Ave.
Okay, so you're not really touching my road at all, you're just putting the easement right there, that's it.
That's right.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Would you kindly repeat your name?
Amanda Vega, V E G A.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to know.
Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? All have been heard, I declare the hearing closed.
Would you ever adopt it as amended?
Counselor, I'll give you, certainly give you an opportunity, I have a motion and second to adopt the order as amended. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Boishman.
I only got one question, maybe she can answer me, we're not, nobody, that one, nobody's going to lose any curb cuts, am I right around on this project?
People are going to lose curb cuts, there's going to be a new curb there, right now, there's no curb all the way down the entire place, so, yes, that, people are going to lose curb cuts. There's been drawings, we've gone from 50 to 75 to 100%, we've had meetings with the folks in the neighborhood, we've had, we had a public, we had a neighborhood meeting at Donnelly's on November 30th, we've received a number of phone calls from your constituents and property owners, we've addressed all of them, the people who have been most concerned about curb cuts, I know that we've worked very hard to maximize the amount of space that they're still going to have, you know, you have to remember, these, this is their property, and they have enjoyed no curbs on South Street, on Summer Street, to the extent that that's not even, that's not safe from our perspective, as we operate under DOT guidelines, that's the way they've enjoyed their property, a frustrated expectation is difficult to manage, so we've tried to make sure that those people will still be able to have the maximum access to their property while complying with the guidelines, providing some structure to South Street and making it not a large swath of asphalt all the way out to the eastern part of the city. So, yes, they are, and most folks know what those things are, some of them are being compensated for that, and that's what's in the award of damages that we're asking you to vote on tonight. So there's nothing that you'll be taking from them that you're not paying what we believe to be the fair market value of what it is.
Well, I'm just, I'm not worried about the resident, so I understand, my concern would be a business, and I understand what we're trying to do, because I, electric app, too many curb cuts, and I understand what you're doing, but I just want to make sure we do it right, so we will not hurt the businesses down in that. so we will not hurt the businesses down in that particular area, especially if you want to take a left turn, and some of them, you're going down towards Leninsburg, and you want to cross, and all of a sudden, the curb cut's not widening up because the other guy coming out, you can't get in.
I think we've taken every step to stay in touch with them. I'm going to let Pat finish the answer. But I know that we have had specific businesses really concerned about their access to their property. I know that Mr. Beloquas worked with at least one of them, if not more, that I directed directly to him to do. Choice Insurance Agency was down there. I know there's Machete's Pizza Place has been very concerned about their...we're still expanding what we are able to give them for a curb cut. I think they're going to wind up with a thirty to perhaps even a thirty-five-foot curb cut, which would be allow them full access to their front parking there. So we are very sensitive to that issue, and we're working on it.
Counselor Elsitt?
Yeah, that's what I'm...I apologize. Probably I should have asked Gary beforehand, but I apologize. I didn't think about it.
That's okay. I really will forgive you.
And thank you for that explanation also.
I have a motion.
But it's a good question.
I have a motion and second to adopt seventy-six seventeen. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Joseph. All those in favor?
Aye.
I apologize. This is my roll call.
Yes, sir, please.
Yes. We'll have a vote by roll call. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Bozeman?
Yes.
Counselor Beesaw?
Yea.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Dean Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Donnelly?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Joseph?
Yea.
Counselor Caddy?
Yes.
President Kuschmerich?
Yea.
Okay.
It is unanimous.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for your time and your efforts.
Thank you very much.
The motion carries. Next on the agenda, lone order, zero-
Eighty-five seventeen be sent to its final reading?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send zero-eighty-five seventeen to its final reading and a roll call vote. I'll just read this order. Order that the sum of two million five hundred thousand dollars be and hereby is appropriated to pay costs of construction, constructing approximately twelve thousand three hundred feet of water main on various city streets, including but not limited to replacing existing cast-iron water mains and cement-lined ductile iron-water mains, installation of new fire hydrants and valves, and the replacement of service lines, and the payment of any and all costs incidental and related thereto as outlined in the enclosed lone order. This is a roll call vote requiring eight votes to pass. Madam Clerk.
Yes. Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Bozeman?
I was supposed to make you thank all these people.
What's your question?
Counselor Beesaw?
Yea.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Dean Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Donnelly?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Joseph?
Yea.
President Kuschmerich?
Yea.
It is unanimous. The motion carries. Orders, finance?
One-twenty-four seventeen through one-thirty-four seventeen be sent to finance.
I have a motion and second to send one-twenty-four seventeen up to and including one-thirty-four seventeen to finance. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. The motion carries. Orders?
One-thirty-five seventeen through one-forty-nine seventeen. I'm sorry, one-
Forty-two.
One-forty-two seventeen be sent to council as a whole, and one-forty-three seventeen be sent to finance.
I have a motion and second to send one-thirty-five seventeen up to and including one-forty-two seventeen of the mayor's FY eighteen budget to a council's a whole committee meeting, and one-forty-three seventeen to finance. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. The motion carries.
Motion for suspension on one-forty-four seventeen through one-forty-seven seventeen?
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on one-forty-four seventeen up to and including one-forty-seven seventeen. Counselors, these were petitions that were just passed at this most previous council meeting, and these are simply the corresponding orders to those petitions. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Was that just suspension, or was that the...
Suspension.
Suspension. The item's now before.
Move orders, one-forty-four through one-forty-seven be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt one-forty-four up to and including one-forty-seven seventeen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. One-forty-eight seventeen?
One-forty-eight seventeen be sent to property?
Counselor, I'd actually ask if we send this to a meeting of council as a whole so we can address any financial concerns as well. I think it'll be enough questions from the whole council. I think this warrants a council as a whole meeting, if you're minimal.
I'm glad we're sending it to a committee. I was afraid we were going to do this tonight. I'm like, not after we just got this.
We are not, no.
Okay. Council as a whole is fine with me.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send one-forty-eight seventeen to a council as a whole committee meeting. Counselors, before we vote, just a note that each of your places, and will be placed and filed with the clerk's office, is a slightly amended order. Is there a slightly amended order reflecting this precise language changed slightly from what was in your packet? I have a motion and second to send to a council as a whole. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Orders of notice?
Move one-forty-nine seventeen and one-fifty seventeen be sent to public hearings on June sixth, two thousand seventeen?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send one-forty-nine and one-fifty seventeen to public hearings on June sixth, two thousand seventeen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Ordinances?
Move ninety-five seventeen and ninety-seven seventeen be sent to their third and final reading?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send ninety-five seventeen and ninety-seven seventeen to their final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Counselors, this will require two-thirds of those present to pass, which will require seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. One-ten seventeen?
Motion to send one-ten seventeen to its final reading? Second.
I have a motion to send one-ten seventeen to a final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition. The motion carries. One-eleven seventeen and ordinance-
Move one-eleven seventeen be sent to its third and final reading?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send one-eleven seventeen to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Move one-twelve seventeen be sent to its third and final reading?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send one-twelve seventeen to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Move one-fifty-one seventeen through one-fifty-five seventeen be sent to their first readings?
Second.
Excluding one-fifty-four seventeen, Counselor, please.
Excluding one-fifty-four seventeen?
I have a motion and second to send one-fifty-one, two, three, and five seventeen to their first readings. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. One-fifty-four seventeen, Counselors, I'd be looking for a motion to amend. This is simply supposed to say to establish a residence parking-only area. This was a, the original petition, an original vote by council reflected this. It simply just didn't make it into the first iteration.
Move one-fifty-four seventeen be sent to its first rea...well, move, we amend one-fifty-four seventeen?
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend one-fifty-four seventeen to reflect resident parking only in place of no parking. All those in favor?
I've got a question on the motion.
Speaking to the motion, Counselor-
Say residential parking. And if Paul Bozeman goes up there and he wants to visit Counselor Kuschmerich?
Yes.
Can I park there, or do I have to park downtown?
Counselor, this is nowhere near downtown, but typically you'd be parking in the driveway of the residents that you are visiting in that area.
But if there's no parking in the driveway, because he's got four cars from his family, that's my question. I shouldn't visit?
Counselor, I believe you can also get an exemption from the police department on special occasion, but typically, otherwise, that's your option.
All right.
I have a motion and seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those...I apologize, Counselor Joseph. Speaking to the motion.
I'm sorry. Is, are these going to be, is a notice of these going to be sent to the residents so that they know before the final reading that these are before us?
Counselor, you'll notice this is actually a petition from two thousand and eight.
I know.
The council voted on it, accepted it. I can actually tell you, I believe the signs already are in place. So this is a procedural oversight that, to his credit, Attorney Pousitari noticed a number of ordinances were never necessarily filed on petitions that had been acted upon. So thank you, Solicitor Pousitari, for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition, Counselor. The motion carries. Petitions?
Move one-fifty-six seventeen, move one-fifty-six seventeen through one-fifty-eight seventeen be sent to a public hearing. I'm sorry. Move one-fifty-six seventeen be sent to finance.
I have a motion and second to send one-fifty-six seventeen to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
One-fifty-seven seventeen and one-fifty-eight seventeen be sent to a public hearing on June sixth?
The motion and second to send one-fifty-seven and one-fifty-eight seventeen to public hearings on June sixth, two thousand and seventeen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Motion to send one-fifty-nine and one-sixty seventeen to our respective committees?
Okay.
And second to send one-fifty-nine and one-sixty seventeen to their respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Before we move into executive session, I just will take announcements now for the public before we adjourn from the public. I'd just like an opportunity to thank Crossroads Community Church, New View Communities, as well as the various residents that came out for specifically the Ward Four and Five cleanup in the downtown. They had an impact throughout the city. The work that they did, the hundreds of volunteers that came out this past Saturday, it was certainly a tremendous response. And in addition to these individuals, individual groups that came out, I'd like to thank everyone throughout the city that participated in the ward cleanup process these past couple of months. You know, the impact is transformative across the city. You certainly see, you know, it's great to see so many individuals come forth and help the city and volunteer and step up, and it's great to see the impact. Counselor Beesaw?
Thank you. I too would like to thank everyone who participated. It surely is great to see everyone out there cleaning up the city, and hopefully someday we'll get to the point where people will be respectful of the city and we don't have to do it. The other thing to that I'd like to point out is there is a Skylark concert going to be at the Fitchburg Public Library Thursday, May eighteenth, at six-thirty. I guess the date in the newspaper was incorrect, so please make sure that if you're planning on going at the concert, it's going to be May eighteenth at six-thirty at the library. Thank you.
Counselor Bean?
President, I'd like to congratulate Counselor Bozeman and Counselor Donnelly for winning the chili cook-off three weeks ago. I know we were touched for it at the last meeting, where I think Counselor Bozeman actually had the trophy with him at the time, but due to time constraints, we weren't able to acknowledge him for that, and Counselor Donnelly. But I'd like to make sure that they get their spot in the sun for that one.
Counselor Bozeman, I'll apologize. I cut you off not knowing you had the trophy right there. So that's my personal apology. Your chili was delicious.
Now, can I say something, sir? In regards to chili, now, in regards to chili, I just want all the counselors and all. And not only even Counselor Donnelly and I make the best chili. With our wives, Ward Two also took the fifty-fifty diner, took first place in a chili contest. Now, I don't want to say too much, but there was somebody there, and I like to pat myself on the back. I thought I heard, overheard him say, jeez, you have such a great ward, and I wish our wards were like that. Oh, I want to, to be. So I don't want to say too much, you know, but I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bozeman.
Moving adjourned?
Counselor Green?
Yes, I, again, in reference to the ward cleanup, I want to personally thank the DPW department and the Department of Health for their efforts. I will say that this was probably one of the best ward cleanups that we've had throughout the city, meaning the most amount of trash that we removed from streets and public ways, and they worked hard. So I want to acknowledge those departments. Thank you.
I thank you, Counselor Green. Just a couple more announcements, and, Counselors, I'll ask you to help me out on some of the times. We have a police memorial ceremony this Sunday, is that correct, on Main Street? I believe it's at ten a.m. If it sounds correct. Counselor Bozeman, I know you have the program right there with you. If you could help me with the details.
May twenty-first, and at ten p.m.
Sunday.
Ten a.m.
Sunday, May twenty-first, at ten a.m. at Police Memorial Square.
White Cross Ceremony?
The White Cross Ceremony, thank you.
May twenty-eighth?
On Sunday, May twenty-eighth, at six p.m. at Monument Park, as well as the parade on Memorial Day. It's Monday, May-
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth at-
Nine, twenty o'clock.
Ten a.m. on Main Street.
Upper Common.
In the Upper Common. Thank you, Counselor Dean Tally. And in addition, I'd like to just take one more opportunity to thank the folks for the Summer Street imminent domain taking an order, the individuals and the organizations that donated their properties to the city. It's really unceremoniously when we adopt these orders, but these are individuals who forego taking those sums of monies and donate it back to the city. So thank you to those organizations. You know who you are. That said.
Motion to adjourn.
Counselor, we have a executive session. There is a need to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to labor negotiations, and an open meeting may have detrimental effect on bargaining or litigating position of the city. The city council will resume an open session after executive sessions concluded, only for the purposes of adjournment. I'd like to ask for a motion to enter into executive session.
Motion to enter into executive session.
I have a motion and second to enter into executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Is there a roll call vote for that?
I apologize. You're correct, Counselor Bean. Roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Bozeman?
Yes.
Counselor Beesaw?
Yea.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Donnelly?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Joseph?
Yes.
Counselor Caddy?
Yes.
President Kuschmerich?
Yea.
It is unanimous. The motion carries. It is unanimous. The motion carries. All those in favor? All those opposed? It is unanimous. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yes.
All right, we're now in executive session. We'll give this a few minutes to conclude.